Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on May 3rd, 2nd, excuse me, 2023. And I hereby call to order the meeting of the Storri County Board of Supervisors and would invite you to join us in the Pledge of Legions. Thank you, everybody. Now we'll come to adoption of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval of today's agenda.
So moved.
I will second. Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda approved. We will go on to public comment number one, and that is a comment period for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I'll open public comment, and if anybody has a comment, either please come to the table up here, or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand. Seeing nobody, I will close public comment. We will go on to consideration of proclamation recognizing May 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Storri County. And I will start in a second. Whereas mental health is a part of overall health, and one of five U.S. adults experience a mental illness each year, and one in 20 experience serious mental illness each year. And whereas one in six U.S. youth aged 6 to 17 experience a mental health disorder each year. And whereas 50% of all lifetime mental illnesses begin by age 14 and 75% by age 24. Whereas long delays often occur between initial appearance of symptoms and when individuals get help, which means early identification and allocation of treatment can make a difference in successful management of mental illness recovery. And
Whereas it is important to maintain mental health and learn the symptoms of mental illness in order to get help when it is needed. And whereas every citizen and community can make a difference in helping to end the silence and stigma that for too long has surrounded mental illness and discouraged people from getting help. And public education and civic activities can encourage mental health and help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. And now therefore be it resolved that we, the Storri County Board of Supervisors, who hereby proclaim May 2023 as National Mental Health Awareness Month in Storri County and call upon our citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses and schools to recommit our county to increasing awareness and understanding of mental illness and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illness to promote recovery. I move the proclamation.
Second, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. The proclamation is approved.
And Supervisor Merkin, if I may, the Ames Public Library, they're hosting a community conversation from 6:30 to 8:30 PM this evening called "Navigating Mental Health and Substance Abuse Systems," and there'll be a panel. Everyone's invited. It's open to the public, and it is at no cost.
Thank you for the information. We'll go on to another proclamation, which is a proclamation recognizing May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Storri County.
Whereas Asian American and Pacific Island heritage in the United States was celebrated beginning in 1978 and was made into a month-long event in 1992. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month seeks to honor and recognize the contributions of residents from Asia, India, and the Pacific Islands. And whereas Native Hawaiians, Chinese, and Japanese were the first to migrate to the Pacific Northwest and were known for handling canoes and transporting goods, construction, and railroad expansion. And where generations of Asian Pacific and Pacific Islanders of all backgrounds have been inspirational examples of leaders and trailblazers and have a longstanding history of making esteemed, significant cultural, economic, and community contributions across the United States.
And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islanders are one of the fastest-growing ethnic populations in the nation, and a vast diversity of languages, religions, and cultural traditions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders is continuously fostered to strengthen the fabric of American society. And whereas during this month, we acknowledge the additional determination, hard work, and perseverance Asian American and Pacific Islanders must put forth to be heard and seen in the United States. Now, therefore be it resolved that we, the Storri County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Storri County and encourage everyone to observe, recognize, and celebrate the culture, heritage, and contributions of Asian American and Pacific Islanders to our country, our state, our cities, and our schools. I move the proclamation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? If not, Merkin, aye. Headens?
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Thank you. Next, we will go on to Agency Report for Mid-Iowa Community Action. Clarissa Thompson, are you here or are you on Zoom?
Allison Wilson.
Allison Wilson? Are you giving the report?
Hello, sorry about that. I'm not sure what happened. Hi, I'm Allison Wilson, joining Zoom, not Clarissa Thompson. She wasn't able to be here today, so I apologize for that. And with me I have Jody Lindsay. And she is, well, I didn't say who what I am. I am the Family Development Director at MICA overseeing our five counties. And Jody Lindsay is with me today. She is our family development worker. I would say the guru of our Storri County office located in Ames. So I don't know if you can see her, and I hope you all can hear me.
We can hear you.
Okay, good. Thanks. Okay. So in the report, as you can see, there is, we, MICA brings together an array of programs and services to help families meet their needs, build their strengths, reach their goals. And our mission is just that, helping people who are experiencing poverty to meet their needs. So whether a family first comes to us to use our food pantry or to receive or ask for, apply for assistance, energy assistance, or looking for Head Start or WIC, our staff are helping to connect families to other MICA programs and services as well as our community partners. Because we know that by linking families in all areas of life and addressing all their needs will bring on lasting change. So I'm not going to dig deep in all our services listed in the report that we serve in Storri County, but really want to highlight a few key findings. We just completed our 2023 Community Needs Assessment. And for the first time in 10 years, food insecurity was identified as the number one need amongst all our families in our five county service area. And I say 10 years because that is how long we've been asking the exact same question on the survey. So a good segue into our food pantry, but the generous donations and funding we receive from asset allows us to continue to operate our food pantry five days a week. So we run a choice pantry, which means that families are able to select the foods that their family will use and eat. In addition to the pantry, families can access our food rescue, which is perishable items that are donated to us such as bread, eggs, and sandwiches on a daily basis. This is generously ran by our volunteers and really couldn't do what we do without them. Since our last year in our report that we gave, we had a 68% increase in the number of pounds of food donated. And this was greatly needed as we served more than 125 new families. A big highlight that we are really excited about is we received a 2023 Dodge Care Go van through a grant from the City of Ames to better serve families running a food mobile pantry. So the onset of COVID really helped us think outside the box. But that success in meeting the needs of families is a service that we will just now continue and become a staple service of ours. So many of our families really struggle to get to us because we know there's lots of transportation barriers. And now we'll be able to get to them. So since last year, we have increased our deliveries by 110%. Really proud of this and really will see this grow in the next year as well. So as you probably know, the rise of cost of food and the reduction in benefits for families who receive SNAP or WIC, we hope to bring more awareness to them, to families and the community, and help them feel comfortable utilizing our services by providing that more delivery of services. And whether that's us going to small towns or neighborhoods to provide that for them. So I also want you to know that the other high need has been in our assistance for LIHEEP, which is energy assistance. It has nearly, we just saw such a huge influx this year, probably nearly tripling from the last year. And during COVID, families' assistance amounts they were receiving were so much higher than what they are getting now. So we have returned to the pre-COVID assistance. So we know that means that families will struggle even more to meet basic needs, pay for the rising food costs, and so forth. So in Storri County alone, we saw a 16.5% increase in our LIHEEP applications that Jody has done. So I'm going to end on sharing that our primary issues identified by families that we surveyed on our community assessment for Storri County was housing, access to basic needs, and childcare. So just to note, because I didn't dig deep into all the programs we provide, but I was comparing our numbers for the report from last year, and nearly all our programs saw a large increase in serving families. So in addition to what I've already shared, 19% increase in families served through WIC. 17% increase on referrals in our first five program. 48% served in child health increase with 31 more children receiving oral health services. And we also completed 66% more sealants for children. So I know I didn't go into detail in all our programs listed in the report, but as you can see, we have many different avenues of connecting families and making sure they are connected to resources and meet their needs. So if you have any specific questions on anything in the report or anything I talked about, or either Jody and I can answer those questions.
Supervisor Headens, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. I do want to fully disclose that I currently serve as the Board Chair of MICA and do appreciate all the work that you do in all the areas. I do believe that our last board meeting, it was announced with the LIHEEP program, you have three additional providers to help families for the LIHEEP program. So that is, that is great since the need is continuing to grow.
Yeah, yes.
I was glad to hear that you're looking at how you're doing services in the rural areas. And I wonder if you would just talk about that a little more because that's always a concern I have with two-thirds of Storri's population in Ames. And where that is where we have the easiest transportation system. I think it's easier for residents of Ames to get services from our agencies that provide countywide than it is for other areas. So who have you been working with and how often can you get out to the rural areas to provide services?
Yeah, Jody, do you want to kind of chime in on here? Anything you want to add?
So we do a deliveries for Storri County every second. And for Thursday of the month, we have volunteers who take our deliveries. And primarily, we go out to Collins and the Maxwell areas. We've seen a great need there for our services from our pantry. I know there's a lot of counties that do, or with Storri County, there's a lot of towns that do offer pantries as well. But as of right now, anybody who needs assistance through us can just call in, and we can definitely do a delivery to whatever town you're, or county, or city you're in, in Storri County. So that's always available. And we do see a majority of the elderly in Collins and Maxwell that do need the assistance.
Yeah, and I would just add that we'll be really looking, I mean, we just got the van, so we really need to strategize how, you know, it's going to take more staff to either cover our county office to replace Jody so she can go out to do more deliveries. So we'll be really looking at how we can expand elsewhere.
Okay. And I assume that you work with partners in some of the communities because some of the larger communities do have food pantries, like Nevada and Storri City. So you probably are looking at where there, where there aren't as many services.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. I appreciate all the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
So we'll go on to consideration of minutes, the minutes of the April 25th meeting. I would entertain a motion.
I move approval of the April 25th, 2023 minutes as presented.
Second, Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Next, personnel actions.
I move approval of personnel actions as listed.
Second, Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions approved. Next is consent agenda.
I move approval of consent agenda items as listed.
And I will second that. Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent agenda approved. And we will go on then to public hearing items. And Joby, we have you on. For the project on the permanent counter barriers.
Good morning, Board.
Good morning, Joby.
Here to discuss the permanent front counter barriers. Project that's been in the works for, we'll just go with a while.
A little while, longer than anybody anticipated, I'm sure.
Yes, but you know, the scope changed on it a couple of different times. You know, when we first set out to do this, we were looking at more of just kind of like a biological barrier. And then as it evolved, it turned more into incorporating some security into the front counters as well. So few redraws, and I think we're here. Pretty much ready for to go out for bid. As you can see, we got a cost estimate. It was originally budgeted for 152,500, I do believe. But like I mentioned just a couple seconds ago, that was based more off of significantly less scope. So all in all, considering, you know, we had a couple of front counters that significant difference in original design, we added, you know, in this, during this process, we've, we moved environmental health out of planning and development across the hall. So that added another, another front counter that wasn't in the original design. We did some rework the animal control front counter and added an office that's incorporated in here. So I think all in all, given how much the scope has changed, I think that the extra cost isn't too bad, especially after some of the other projects we've had go out for bid here recently.
Right, yeah.
Well, granted, we've seen easy things once they come back for bid. But I think my kind of only real question of you is we have that front desk down front at the main entry. We've kind of kicked around different ideas on, do we, do we incorporate that in this project? Do we not do anything with it? Do we have that listed as an alternate bid so that we know how much it would cost to include kind of enclosing it, putting glass around it? So kind of looking for a little bit of direction on how you would like to, if we proceed with this, how would you like to list that front counter downstairs?
My sense is that there are some other alternatives that we can do down there with directional signing and everything, but it doesn't cost us anything to list it as an alternate.
Correct.
So why don't we list it as an alternate? So we know what the cost would be if we decided to do that.
I would concur with that.
And that would essentially be my recommendation because, yeah, we can simply just circle it and say, hey, include an alternate price to add this in, so.
Is that the direction you need then?
Well, just overall, you know, direction to go ahead and proceed with putting out for public bid.
Okay. Do you have any questions before we open the public hearing?
Not.
Anything else you want to state?
Yeah, I think Jeff, I think we covered it. I'll look at my notes, but yeah, I think.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing regarding the plans and bid specifications for the permanent counter barrier project. Is there any public comment? Either come up to the table if there's anybody here, or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. Seeing nobody, I'll close public comment and I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of the plans and bid specifications for the permanent counter barrier project.
Second, any further discussion? Hearing none. Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you for your good work on this.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to number 13, additional items. Discussion and consideration of temporary closing Human Services Center to the public for concrete repairs, effective 5/8 to 5/12. Joby?
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Morning.
Yes, at the Human Services Center in Ames, this is a budgeted project to replace the main concrete, called a sidewalk, but it's a pretty significant area that leads up to the front entry that the whole thing from the front doors all the way out to the parking lot, we need to, needs replaced. Just years of ice melt use has just deteriorated to the point that it's due to be replaced. And we looked at many ways to safely bring the public into the building, and I just, there's no good way to do it. So kind of settled on maybe the best plan would be to close the facility just to the public, still available for employees to work in there, and they could still bring the public in by appointment because we have multiple other entry points into the building, but they are secured. So they would have to, you know, similar in nature to what we did in COVID, minus not the ability to use the front entry. And they look to start, if approved, they would start this coming Saturday and complete it next week and should be open back for normal business on the 12th.
I'm assuming that you've talked with the, all the tenants in there.
Yeah, well, probably Farming Human Services, they have a drop box for applications. We plan to move it out to the fence so that they can, you know, anybody could access it there. I'll work with Leanne to make a big sign that's got, like, similar to what we do with COVID. It's got every office department's phone number on it so that if they need to call, post it on social media, the webpage, you know, try to get the word out. Been in discussion with the, everybody that inhabits the building for about a month, month and a half. I warned them earlier this winter that it was probably going to happen, so tried to prepare the best we could.
There's never a good time for
No, it was.
So the sign you put out there, you'll have the phone numbers, all the offices on, in case somebody has a cell phone on them and can call in, but they won't be able to get to the entryway.
Unfortunately, that lobby phone is right inside.
Right there. Yeah, that's what I just realized, is you can't get to the lobby. And that's the difference between how we handled it during COVID and pushing.
Right, yeah, because this one is, like I said, it's the stoop directly outside the front doors is part of this, and that ramp going down the side and everything out to the parking lot, so.
I think having a sign there is, will be a good thing. So because not everybody sees social media, but that
Yes.
sounds like everybody's done the best planning they can to ensure that we can get, get services to the customers.
Yep, and we still, we have, there is a second ADA entrance into the building, but it falls under that. It's not a public entrance, and, but if a client needed in, we could get them into the building.
Okay. Is there, are there any other questions? Then we need a motion for temporary closing of the Human Services Center to the public for concrete repairs.
So moved.
Second, Headens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Thanks for your good work on that one.
Thank you.
Got anything else, of course?
I think that's it.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Ah, Mike Cox will be next. And this is running discussion and consideration of solar power and services agreement with Red Lion Renewables.
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Morning.
This is, with me this morning is Terry DeVorek. He's the owner of Red Lion Renewables, and he's going to be able to answer any questions much more, much better than I will as we get into this. So I wanted to discuss with you this morning the exciting option of moving forward with a photovoltaic array at Dakin's Lake and essentially convert the energy source at Dakin's over to that solar array. So what you have before you is a power purchase agreement that would, let me, let me just paint the broad brushstrokes here. That power purchase agreement agrees that we will buy power from Red Lion Renewable from the solar, that they produce from the solar array. And so that's a 25-year, 20-year agreement. And over the life of the, of the solar array, we expect to save about $250,000. We would still have a payment that goes to our existing utility provider, which is Alliant, because the array is designed to produce up to about 98% of the energy that the park needs. And so days that, that we can buy from the, that the array is producing, we would get the energy we need from the array. And times when we need energy that the array isn't producing, then we would get that energy from Alliant. So again, in broad brushstroke, the Red Lion would own, operate, maintain the array for the term of the agreement. And, and we would just purchase the power from them. There would be no costs associated other than purchase of the power. Out of the gate with this agreement, we would save about $3,000 annually with a reduced rate, of course, with the purchase from the array versus a purchase from Alliant. And then as we would progress in the timeline with the agreement, then that savings would increase every year. And again, culminate with the savings of about a quarter of a million dollars over, over the lifetime of the system. So I'll also say that the agreement does contemplate or give us the option to purchase the system. Should we desire to do that at some point, it does not require that we purchase the system. It just simply gives us that option. And if we opt to not purchase it and let the agreement run to fruition, then the owner would just simply remove the, remove the array, remediate the site, and then both parties are clear from, from any obligation at that time. So we're really excited about it. It's a way that we can kind of convert energy source over to solar. At, at the first park, we have looked at other parks. But simply the reason why it works at Dakin's Lake is that we have Alliant Energy as the electricity provider. And they have a much more amenable, if you will, renewable program. So that's why it works with Alliant. It does not work right now with our other providers, which are smaller REC's. So it works well at Dakin's. It sets the message that the Conservation Board wants to send and, and lives up to that standard at the same time. So Conservation Board considered this at their last meeting, and they recommended moving forward with this agreement. So that's kind of the broad brushstrokes. And Terry's here to answer any questions or provide any more information beforehand.
Thanks for letting me come here. I mean, I'd missed it all, so I'm not sure what else to add, to be honest with you. I mean, it works well at this location, and we've done it. I'd missed it all. So I'm not sure what else to add, to be honest with you. I mean, it works well at this location and we've done it. There are a hundred and something other sites throughout the state, including some counties, Lee County and Polk County, as well as many cities and school districts with thirty-five, forty different customers throughout the state. So doesn't work everywhere. Like, like Mike said, the other utilities don't have the program that Alliant does that we can take advantage of, but we can take advantage of it, Dakens Lake, and it works out. So that's why we proposed it and asked to move forward.
Thank you. Supervisor Hiddens, do you have any questions?
I do have one question. One, I appreciate you clarifying because the first line in the second paragraph said no financial cost to the county and then went on to say we would be purchasing. So there is there is somewhat of a financial cost and I understand at a lower rate. So is that a like a set rate or? And how long is that rate set for?
So the rate is in the contract. It starts at
eleven and a half cents?
Eleven and a half cents and goes up two and a half percent a year. So in the contract, all twenty years, one of the exhibits says what your rate is every single year. So you know what you're going to be paying year seventeen, nineteen, et cetera. So that's that's established in the contract. The option price to buy the system after all the tax duties are done. So in the sixth and seventh years, when we can start looking at the option, the estimated fair market value is in the contract as well, never required to buy it. So we could get to year seven, we sit down here and say, hey, no, we don't want to buy it yet. So we get to year eight, do it again. And like Mike said, if we get to twenty years to twenty-year term and say, no, we're we're done. We want to go different route. I removed my equipment and we shake hands and go our separate ways.
Thank you.
Um, I have no questions. So. Would entertain a motion?
I move approval of the solar power and services agreement with Red Lion Renewables.
Second. Hiddens?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Terry, thank you for being here. Next, we have a consideration request from City of Collins to amend the urban renewal agreement. Mayor Comages? And Leanne Harder? Morning, mayor.
Good morning. Before the mayor begins, I do want to correct something I did comment on earlier before the meeting. We have actually paid out Collins for the claim for this. Because I had incorrectly told them that we had not received reimbursement yet. With that, I will be in the back and glad answering questions when the mayor's done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne. Mayor, good morning.
Good morning. Well, I I'm comedy because a few years ago, that when the Story County provided Tiff opportunity to communities, I know some chains have changed the direction of that that particular program. We had requested some help with some stormwater mitigation. And one of our solutions suggested to us by our engineering firm was that we should purchase some land on 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 east of town and build a retention pond, a larger retention basin that would help us mitigate because we got so many gallons of water coming off those those fields to the east of the community that it would allow us to retain that water and process it out. And so we came to the county and proposed that we would we would do some of our own work with with our stormwater in general because we did do that part. But we'd also have purchased land and we would develop the land accordingly. And, you know, as we got moving through the process, we we knew we had to do some feasibility studies for the things, additional fundraising to make this happen that we didn't want to burden the county with. And we were able to comp the twenty-five thousand dollar fee to pay for the feasibility study, which took a very long time to do. And when they actually completed the feasibility study, they they determined that the watershed was too high and that we would not be able to dig that retention pond deep enough to actually provide us the support we were looking for on the as grand a scale as we were hoping to use. And the additional cost it would take for tiling and draining and things like that were just astronomical in terms of what we were hoping to accomplish. And so we've been sitting on this for, well, actually not very long, a few months, I think since the summer, I think we came back with the news. And so now we're we're kind of trying to brainstorm, okay, what's next? Because we don't like to sit back and do nothing in town. We like and, you know, we've got a couple of options, but we don't, we haven't really debated these options. We don't know which direction is best for us. We don't know what, we haven't even talked to legal counsel, what? Because we don't sell property very often in the city of Collins. We don't, that's a process we usually get something involved with. None of that's happened, but before we can even have those conversations, it makes sense to come to the Port of Supervision and ask us what we can do. Because part of the funding you gave us was to purchase this property. And we want to make sure we're doing right by the county and follow all the rules and specifications that you guys lay out for us in those terms. So, you know, we've got a couple of different options and I've laid them out here and I apologize if there's any grammatical errors in this. I literally had an hour to put this together. And I was probably on painkillers for my hip surgery when I did it. So who knows what I wrote, but you know, option one, we do have the original owner who's interested in getting the property back. I don't have any idea what his purposes are with the property. He's here in the room right now. It's almost eleven forty-five. We better hurry because he's probably got to go to lunch here soon. And then we also have a another person who's interested in the property to develop it, perhaps put a greenhouse and do some other things there, bring some jobs to the community. The city has the option of just keeping the property and and waiting until we can raise the funds to develop it and add the extra improvements we want, which could take a very, very long time. Or there's always the option of just digging down as far as we can dig down and get what we can out of it, which, to be honest with you, may not be the best use of resources based on what the engineering companies told us. We're a little frustrated with that process because we were sure that this was a grand idea. And they came back and said, well, not so grand after all. So we we don't know which direction to go because we don't know which direction to let us to go. And since we we got the money from you for an intended purpose, we're asking, can we repurpose this project? Go a different direction if need be? Does that make sense? I do explain that.
Yes. So just so I'm clear, you're looking to instead of using the money for wastewater to develop?
Stormwater.
Or first, excuse me, stormwater? To do other development is what you're looking at?
Potentially. We we don't, right now, like I said, we've got four options. Like I said, we can we can just sell it back the the old former, whatever. And and it wouldn't do the city any good, but it would still give them options where they want to do. And we can just reset and go back to where we were before, which was having nothing done. And that point, I I would guess the county would probably want their ten thousand dollars back. That's what I'm going to guess. The other option would be to, like I said, continue forward with a retention pond, but it's going to be much smaller scale than we hoped. And it's not going to do near as much good as we originally intended. And that is, and that would be in the exact spirit of what we took the money for, but it would not do what we hoped it was going to do. The other option was just to just continue to sit on the property and wait to wait and see how many more improvements we can make downstream and how much that might impact something. And because they basically told us that you need to focus downstream as opposed to upstream because the upstream, we just, we can't make make deep enough a hole to make an impact. Unless you have about a million or two million dollars with the tiling coming out of that, and that's something that's not feasible for us. And and of course, the fourth option is, you know, we've got somebody else who's interested and she's also in the audience. They're they're sitting next to each other. And they've already got established business in town and and they've talked about developing at least part of the property and maybe using part of the retention area too that would help the city, but also help what they're going to what they're want to put on to expand their their landscaping business. So those are the four options that we're looking at, and we don't know which is right, which is wrong, but we know that we have to ask you guidance before we even talk about it.
Well, we'll probably have to talk with our attorney as well, but I'm looking right now at the document, which is our economic development policies. And it says no tax increment rebate grants loans or assistance to private business. And and it seems to me that your option for selling the money and and sending the money back to the county might be the best option just because of that. I and we can ask, but I'm just a quick look at it. I'm not sure that that we could that we could do that.
So just to be clear, when I say option one and option four, that is selling the property. I mean, the county would in those situations want the money back, the ten thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay, but that's but to move forward with that option, if we decide that's the best for Collins, the county would need to check with their legal counsel to make sure that's that's okay. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. And that's something you obviously can't do today. So we're going to have to push this back to another time. But is that something we can, a determination we can get? Do we need to get back on the agenda, discuss that again, or?
Um, we can get the determination and let you know.
And then see if it would need to be on an agenda.
It might need to be on an agenda again, yeah.
And is that something I and I I'd be happy to figure out a way to get here, but is that something? I mean, we we kind of know what we're doing here. Dwight, would Andy come back to present that? I'm hoping to go back to the work intervention and get a try to buy.
Yeah, I, you know, maybe you could have somebody else from the city represent the city at another meeting.
Sure. Well, maybe I can do it.
Or you might be able to do it by Zoom. That would make sense. But yeah, we just need, you know, we've got your options, but it sounds to me like the one about holding on to the property and maybe something happens that helps with stormwater is kind of an if and a long, a long ways away. That to me doesn't doesn't sound like it's going to really solve the problem.
I I agree. We're we don't, I mean, when we get something, we want to move forward and use the momentum to keep making improvements and and provides relief to people in town or supports the people in town.
And let me just clarify, and I I think I I know the answer to this. Let me clarify. We granted ARPA monies to Collins for some water projects, but those are, this is not at all related to those. There's no nexus between those those projects and this.
We had actually made, we'd actually made a number of requests because.
Can you play your mic a little bit?
We we'd actually made a number of requests and one of the requests was for stormwater and the county denied that. So this has nothing to do with this. The other supports that you've given us are our water infrastructure and that's
Okay.
You know, a completely different project.
Yeah, thanks for that reminder. Leanne, did you have any questions since you're the person who manages this? This budgeting?
No, I I think hearing that conversations with legal on all parts by all parties, really not taking any action today would be the best course. That way we can make sure to review our policies, what type of clawback provisions we may or may not have within them. And then go forward. And I can work with you, mayor, and make sure that even if you zoom in or if Katie can come.
Okay.
And if it it may be even something that can be later or early on agenda as a court according to your your timeframe.
We appreciate that. And we we have an expectation that if we were to go with option one or four, thank you. I'm not supposed to.
Sorry, I should have reminded you.
That's okay. We don't have this kind of fancy technology in Collins. We just have to shout real loud. Option one or four, we we anticipate that we probably need to do some sort of reimbursement to the county, which which we're okay with, obviously. But on the same note, we want to make sure we're doing it right. So.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we appreciate your being here and you getting your report in and that that's very helpful. And we'll be in touch.
Fantastic.
And.
Is there, and one last thing, is there kind of a timeline we can set for this little bit so I can keep my people informed because they're going to ask me when?
We'll get it to our county attorney's office right away and then it's, they've got a kind of a lengthy list of projects they're working on. So it's as soon as they can get back to us and maybe it'll be a simple one.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, and.
Very much.
Best wishes, be careful with the crutches.
I I appreciate it. Hopefully Friday, I'm going to phase, start phasing off of them. So.
That'd be good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. You take care.
You too.
Okay, then we will not take any action on that item and move on to departmental reports. Animal control, order the report, Anna Henderson. Good morning, Anna.
Good morning. Okay.
Closer, closer.
Is that good?
Talk right into that thing.
Yeah. Sounds loud on your end, but the recording needs needs that.
Well, good morning. I do have some corrections for the report that I submitted. Actually, the table on the first page on other animals transferred, that should say other animals returned to owner. And then under current animals in foster care, the date should be four twenty-seven twenty-three and not January twenty-fifth. So last quarter, we took in a total of forty-one cats and twenty-four dogs, two guinea pigs and one goat. We adopted out eighty-four animals and returned sixteen animals to their owners. We responded to thirty-nine animal control calls. Most of those were can most of those were confined stray animal pickups. And as of four twenty-seven twenty-three, we have ten animals in foster care. Animal intakes, the beginning of the year slowed down as usual, and this gave staff time to hold another kids event called Book Buddies in February. Children had fun reading to the cats and making valentines for the animals, waiting to find their forever homes. And then the Chase and Tales crew helped coordinate a meat and cheese Palooza fundraiser where they raised one thousand eight hundred and nineteen dollars for the animals. Plucky Paws Shelter volunteers provided help with cleaning, enrichment and socialization as well. And in total, there were a hundred and thirty-one volunteer hours last quarter. Staff education included a TNR certification workshop with neighborhood cats and feline life saving through Maddie's Fund. Any questions?
I was going to ask how the cats liked the valentines, but that's probably a pretty ridiculous question.
I think they liked them.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay. I can never tell with cats. Ours is just too inscrutable to know.
Right.
Sounds like you've got a lot of community support as usual.
Yeah, thank you.
Supervisor Hiddens?
I have no questions.
Questions?
Nope. Thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Do you still have the goat?
No, it got it got claimed its owner came looking for it.
Good enough.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for everything you and your staff do. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, moving right along. I have no other reports on the agenda. Updating agenda items, Supervisor Hiddens?
Nope.
I have none either. Public comment number two, this is the time reserved for comments from the public on items not on the agenda. The board may not take any action on the comments due to requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. So I'll open public comment number two. Is there anybody in the room or on Zoom who has any comments? Seeing and hearing none, I will close public comment. We'll go on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. Supervisor Hiddens?
Sure. I have the Story County Medical Groundbreaking this afternoon I'm going to go to. There's, as I mentioned earlier, the community conversation on mental health and substance abuse is tonight. They're also going to livestream, the city of Ames is also going to livestream that as well. So folks who can't make it in person. Thursday, I have a meeting with Greg. Friday, I have the workforce meeting. And then I also have a meeting with Nancy with Heartland of Story, have a look at the new name. I have Monday, I have the secondary roads recognition, and then it looks like we have an ARPA presentation Monday night as well.
Pardon my computer. Um. I had a couple of meetings actually canceled, it looks like, this week, so it's a quieter week. Tomorrow, I'm meeting at Emergency Management with our administrator and John Holland Meg from Johnny Ernst's office. And sometime this week, we're hopefully going to start working on the hazardous mitigation plan. I've got some holes on my calendar. We're going to have a meeting on that Friday. I have AEDC Exec Board meeting. And next Monday, I have Conservation Board. Okay. And we have second, do we have secondary roads?
Monday.
Recognition Monday. Okay. So that's probably it for the next week. I, any other announcements? I, any other announcements?
I believe we adjourn.
Second, we're adjourned. Thank you.